Very proud of that. We knew that was gonna help us onto our next educational experience to get our first internship or to get that first job. In fact, my college roommate from Dubuque County, who we actually saw today, we were in Dubuque before we came here, but my college roommate always talks about the time he applied for a job in Chicago. And the very first thing that those folks keyed on was the fact that he was an Iowa public school kid. That's how important it is. But today, our kids and grandkids, they don't have that same luxury, right? Because we've slipped from number one down into the middle of the pack. And there's no signs of that stopping. Oh, I'm sorry. There's one sign of that stopping, and that's when you elect Deidre DeGier your next governor. And say bye. Because Deidre's got an education plan for a limitless future, and I encourage you all to go take a look at that plan. It's on DeidreForIowa.com. Just a few highlights is, of course, we're gonna start funding public education appropriately. We also wanna make sure that to get back to number one, we need a good, strong backbone. The backbone of our public education is our teachers. So we are going to bring back student loan forgiveness for teachers who teach in public schools for five years in the state of Iowa. And another, another part of this that I like to mention in this plan, because I think, just talking about backbone, and then I think this is the foundation for us. I think this helps us with a lot of things. And this point is, Deidre's plan includes putting a mental health professional in every public school in the state of Iowa. There's several more points to that plan. I encourage you again to go to her website and check that out. And please share this information with other folks that you know who are voting here in November, because we need your help. We need you to vote. We need you to have several other people go out and vote so that we can incorporate these plans, such as, again, funding our public schools and providing better access to not only mental health care across the state, but also rural health care in our state is a big issue for us, for me as well. Okay? So we've had a great week this week. Sunday, as you know, we got the, Deidre got the endorsement at the Des Moines Register. I could be, I don't know, I hope y'all saw that debate on public television, because my partner knocked it out of the park, alright? She definitely showed the Iowans they have a choice here coming up in November 8th on how they want the direction of this state to go. You know, one of the things that I liked about that Des Moines Register article is it hit on a couple of things about Deidre and how her leadership will benefit the state of Iowa for years to come. And those things were the fact that she's been across the state, meeting with Iowans where they are, and talking about the issues that are important to them where they are, and asking them for, you know, solutions. What could help you out in this area? How can, how can the state help you better in this area? And that's not, and then the other part of that article mentioned this too. We just, Deidre's not just meeting with Democrats. She's meeting with Republicans and Democrats and Independents everywhere. Because that's who Deidre's gonna represent. Every single Iowan in this state. And that's what we need back in Des Moines, is representation of you. Not special interests, not the biggest donors. Deidre's here to represent all of you. And I can't wait to be there to help her do that. So, please help me welcome your next governor of the state of Iowa, Deidre DeGier.
It is so good to be back here at lunch to all, and thank you all for spending time with us today. As you see, often repeated on here, you hear me say it, you hear Eric say it, Iowa is worth the work. And you all have an amazing lieutenant governor candidate right now, who was not only putting in work on the weekends, but as he shared with you, he's administering elections in Clinton County. And we know how incredibly important that is. So I need you all to give him another round of applause. I wanna thank the organizers who put this together. Please stand up if you had something to do with this today. Stand up. We all didn't just show up because it was a good idea. We showed up because somebody put work into this. I was asking somebody earlier, is that it? I said, he looks a little shorter. Last time I saw him, he had on all his guard. He's about eight feet tall at that point in time. But it's so good that, and thank you for everything that you've been putting into this. I'm running for governor, folks, because of each and every one of us. I feel very, very strongly about the future of our state and the ability for us to overcome our challenges that are right here before our eyes. And the reason why I feel strongly about our ability to overcome it is because I believe in us as people. And I know that there are a lot of hardworking people out here in the state of Iowa, including the folks that I'm looking at right now. But unfortunately, folks are working way too hard right now. And the reason why we see folks working way too hard is because we have a governor that's not really seeing the issues that regular, everyday folks are experiencing. And because she's not seeing those issues, she's unwilling to stand up and help us overcome these challenges collectively. We look at education. Eric just spent some time talking about that. This is a state that was once number one in education, folks. Now we're eighteen, nineteen, twenty on the list. And so when our governor is talking about record investments in our education system, well, those records aren't enough. Because we've been at the mountaintop under both Republican and Democratic leadership in this state. We were able to prepare our students for a future, not only to compete with their peers in Iowa, but they can compete anywhere against the world. We had schools that opened this year in August with no math teachers, no science teachers. We had schools that opened with no bus drivers. That doesn't give our students an opportunity, a path, to prepare them for a limitless future, does it? It doesn't. But unfortunately, our leadership right now doesn't feel the need to do any more than what she's doing. When she had an opportunity to truly invest in our education system, let me tell you what she did. Back in May, she found fifty-five million dollars of your taxpayer money. She said, "I'm gonna give it to fund the private tuition of two percent of our students." We know that a hundred percent of our students need the unyielding, undivided attention of our current governor. But the best that she could do was help two percent of our students. It's not right, but that's what we've become accustomed to. We become accustomed to leadership who won't come out and create policy for these two tables over here. She'll create policy for these two tables, and she'll go to the press and she'll say, "Hey, press, look at what I did. I created a policy for these two tables." Meanwhile, the rest of the room is saying, "What about us?" No longer do we have to settle for elected officials who's unwilling to go the distance for all of us. Because that's what democracy is about, folks. Going the extra mile, even when it's difficult, not settling for mediocrity. But what we are getting from this current leadership is more than just mediocrity. It's tenacious complacency. We're gonna fight to stay basic or worse. No. Because you all are worth more than worse. You all are worth more than basic. You all are worth the work, and our governor needs to put in that work. But we don't have to wait anymore. Because I don't think she's gonna put it in. That's why I'm running. I'm running because I'm insistent on moving collectively forward for all of us. And it's not just about education. It's about access to healthcare and mental health care services. Some of you all are insured, being turned away, being denied wheelchairs, being denied the essentials that you need in order to move forward. I believe that you shouldn't have to drive forty-five, sixty miles to get the care you need. In urban communities in Des Moines where I live, people live right next door to the hospital and can't get the care that they need. When we have a problem with insured people being turned away from services, we can only imagine what the most vulnerable amongst us is experiencing. When we talk about life, liberty, and happiness and that pathway, we wanna work hard on that pathway, but we should also be healthy and whole from the crown of our heads to the sole of our feet. And the access to being healthy, whole, and whole should be made available. Mental health care is a big challenge all across the state. We see suicides around, domestic violence is up. We see substance abuses up. And these are all ways that people are dealing with challenges that exist in their lives, but when people wanna go get the care, they gotta wait. I was talking to a father in Dubuque, not this go-round, but at the beginning of this campaign, and he was telling me a story about his son, who was seventeen years old. He had to go to the emergency room, because he called his father in the middle of the day and said, "Dad, I'm thinking about harming myself." And so this dad gets in his car, takes his kid to the emergency room. Again, this is an insured father, and the emergency room is the only place he can take his son. Once he gets to that emergency room, the doc's talking to him, analyzing his son, and he says, "Alright, we see some challenges with your son, but unfortunately, we can't get him in to see a doctor for another six months." That is absolutely unreasonable. But I want you to know there's a reason for it. We have less than thirty child psychiatrists in this state, and we have more than half a million kids. The next best thing that that doctor offered that child was, mind you, there in Dubuque, he said, "There's an open bed in Sioux City." Five and a half, six hours away. Again, unreasonable. But the reason for it is that we have less than seven hundred and fifty mental health care beds, and we have more than three million people in this state. The last best thing that that doctor offered that kid was to see a psychologist in two months. Still unreasonable, but there's a reason for it. We are forty-fifth in the nation in mental health care worker availability. The reason why I break that issue down to you in the way in which I did is because you can see the damage that's being caused. You can see the lack of availability of the services perpetuating a crisis in this state. When I talk to law enforcement, especially in our small counties, our county jails are becoming holding facilities for mental health care patients. And that is not what they were intended for. Law enforcement's raising their hand, saying, "You all are turning us into quasi-mental health care practitioners." And that's not what we signed up for. But our governor's failure to show up for Iowans in this way is evidence that she is turning her back on our state because of the most vulnerable time of this young child's life, when he was brave enough to raise his hand and say, "I need some help." There was not a pathway for him to get that help. That is the fundamental flaw, folks. When a gunshot victim rolls up to the emergency room with a wound to their chest, the doctor doesn't say, "I'm sorry, there's no beds here." The doctor doesn't say, "I'm sorry, you gotta wait six to eight months." The doctor doesn't turn that person away. The doctor makes the service available for them. Well, the same should be made as it relates to mental health care. But the provisions in this state aren't there for it to happen. We don't have to figure out why the governor's not doing anything about this issue. We don't have to figure out what it is she's thinking by ignoring Iowans in this way. But what we can do is vote her out if we choose to. All over this state is labor force empowerment. We see jobs leaving our communities. Small businesses are having difficulty hiring employees, providing health care for their employees. We've gotta do a stronger drive of supporting our economies. Almost every state that touches the state of Iowa pays higher wages than the state of Iowa. I know we're dealing with inflation right now, up and down, up and down, because of the pandemic and so many other things. But whether it's inflation, or it's a pandemic, or it's a recession, your leadership should be preparing you to weather any type of economic crisis, any type of storm. And I know this from experience. I started my business in the most peculiar time. It was the brink of the Great Recession. Crazy time to start a small business. But folks were getting laid off from their jobs in central Iowa. Didn't have a choice but to become small business owners. And here I was, this young college student, I knew how to get small businesses started. I knew how to take them to the Secretary of State's office and file their paperwork. But I also knew how to ensure that those small businesses were equipped to weather the storm as they were planning to start. Fast forward to this pandemic. Early on, we knew our small business owners were gonna have some challenges. And so I brought together about fourteen organizations. We raised nearly half a million dollars and distributed those resources across the state in addition to giving those small businesses access to a business coach and a personal financial coach. And the reason why we did this is because we wanted to see small businesses thrive. We didn't wanna see all of the empty strip malls that we saw back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. Now, we weren't able to help everybody, but just imagine that type of fortitude, not on a small level, but a statewide level, where the governor has vision that includes the businesses that are holding your communities together, adding value every single day. This is the type of vision that I believe in in this state. And the reason why that's the type of vision that I believe in is because I'm getting the vision from you all. I'm hearing what matters to you. I'm hearing about the growth that you wanna see in your communities. You know, if we're gonna see this vision come to fruition, we've got some work to do over the next fifteen days. And I know you all are here because you wanted to hear me talk, but after you leave, I need y'all to go and talk to some other people. Because there's folks out there that believe that democracy is dead, that their voice doesn't matter, that their vote doesn't count, there's no need of them participating. Well, I need you to encourage them. Because there is no reason for us to count ourselves out. There is no reason for us to count this state out. I stand here today because of the work that has happened in this state well before any of us were born. Well before any of us were born. And I am, I know beyond a shadow of a doubt that we got it in us to win this because of what we were able to accomplish years and years ago. When we talk about being number one in education, that's not new to our state in modern day history. I like to say we were number one nearly a hundred years before Brown versus Board of Education. For our young people, it used to be that only white folks could attend our public schools and no one else. But in nearly a hundred years before Brown versus Board of Education, our state decided to segregate our schools, because there was a little girl in Muscatine County, she was twelve years old, a little black girl, and she was being educated by her dad. He was an attorney. She was being homeschooled. And he realized, if you were gonna have, if she was gonna have a shot, she needed to go to public school. But hey, it wasn't legal. And so at that point in time, our state made a decision. Wait a minute, wait a minute. It shouldn't matter about your race. It shouldn't matter about your gender. It shouldn't matter about where you live. Each and every Iowa student deserves access to a strong, quality, public education system. That was a big deal for our state, because we were probably just ninety-nine point nine percent white. But it didn't matter. It didn't matter because we saw the humanity that existed in our young people, and we wanted to give our young people a shot. So we made a very unpopular decision, but we made that decision for the sake of humanity, for the sake of people. Anybody ever heard the term "Iowa nice"? You know, every caucus season, the press comes in and they're trying to figure out, what does "Iowa nice" really mean? Some of them think we're gonna be nice to them every day out of the week. Well, that's unreasonable. No one can do that. But what I like to say is what makes us nice is that we see the person. We see the human being. We have political power in this state as well. Remember back in two thousand seven? Rest of the country was trying to figure out, who should be the next president of the United States? Well, that was a big question. In Iowa, we raised our hand with less than three million people, and we said, "Barack Obama." But this is the most powerful part about all of that. The rest of the country listened to us. So when we hear MSNBC and Fox News and CNN saying things about our state that we don't like, I need us to be reminded of who we are. I work for a very important woman that's our vice president right now. And she used to travel across this state saying this to young people and older people. Don't you let people tell you who you are. You show them who you are. And our state has made a history of showing folks how forward-thinking we are. The fact that we can say we have a native settlement in this state is tremendous progress. We are not done yet, though. We are not done yet. I wanna continue to move us forward, but I know I cannot do it by myself. If we've learned anything over these last two years, we need each other. I mean, the pandemic brought our organizations, our nonprofits, our businesses to their needs, and folks were forced to have to have conversations with folks they would normally not have conversations with. Remember those fourteen organizations that we raised nearly half a million dollars with? Those organizations didn't typically sit at the, I mean, we had Bates and Credit Unions at the same table. For anybody invited, they were sitting together. We had community colleges and four-year institutions, universities at the same table. We had Bosnians, we had refugees, we had blacks, we had whites. All of these folks, unlikely individuals, who were insistent on ensuring that small businesses were going to thrive. I'm not seeing you all. Because you showed up, you must believe in your community. You must believe in democracy. Well, we're all unlikely partners that are joined together in this small space. I need us to go find some more friends. And we don't have to find the ones that blatantly disagree with us. That's okay. We'll let those people be their authentic selves right now, okay? We're gonna love them from a distance, okay? And that's okay. What I'm insinuating and what I'm insisting is that we gonna find those folks who believe in education. We gonna find those folks who believe in access to a quality public education system alongside a healthcare system and a mental health care system that's meeting our needs. We want people who care about our freedoms, folks, who care about voting, who care about being able to go into a doctor's appointment and make a decision that's best for you and not have to consider anybody else. That type of freedom. The freedom to be able to go to the grocery store and know you can come home safely. That's the type of freedom that we're talking about. And my big question to you, because I already know we can't, there's no doubt in my mind about our capability. My question to you is, are you willing to join me in this fight? Are you willing to be side by side with me? Alright? Because the only way to get over this filibuster is collectively. Our greatest strength is our ability to see each other for who we are and to accept each other for who you are, the good, the bad, and the ugly. Anybody married in here? Your partners, you gotta accept them for who they are. Every bit of piece of it, right? And that's how we have to think about our communities. This idea that we're perfect, no, no one is. But so long as we're striving for progress, we are on the right path. And what better state, what better state to lift up progress than what I call the Petri dish of progress? Our state, Iowa. We're gonna get it done, are we not? Take that card on the table. I got some numbers I wanna share real quick for you. So, looking at Tama County turnout in two thousand eighteen, because I know sometimes we think, oh, I wanna win this race for Deidre. I wanna make sure more people come out in Tama County for Deidre than her opponent. Well, you don't have to think about the win that way. I want you to shit how you think about the win. This is a basketball coach coming out of me. I'm a former basketball coach, Des Moines East High School. I won a state championship, so I'm valid, okay? It's not bad. It's not bad. And when it's just any state championship, we went twenty-six and oh that season. So this is not bad. It's not bad. Alright, so turnout amongst Democrats in Tama County in two thousand eighteen, seventy percent. Not bad. Comparatively, comparatively, Republicans had seventy-seven percent, but we're not, you know, no, we're talking about us right now. Seventy percent. Anybody sixty-five and older in here? Sixty-five and older. Eighty percent turnout. Bet you're proud about raising that hand now. Yeah, you overachievers. Fifty to sixty-four year olds. Any fifty to sixty-four year olds in the house? Seventy-seven percent turnout. Not too bad at all. So when I'm asking you all to go find more people to engage in this process, we're looking for room for improvement. Eighteen to twenty-four year olds in Tama County turnout was forty-nine percent. Can we do better than that? I think, anybody know any eighteen to twenty-four year olds? Nobody knows any? A few people? Okay, okay, we know some eighteen to twenty. Alright, twenty-five to thirty-four year olds, forty percent turnout. Can we do better than that? Anybody know any of those folks? Great. Now, the biggest room for opportunity that we have is with our no party, our independent voters. In this county, in two thousand eighteen, forty-six percent turnout. We gotta do better than that. We've got to. So as you all are engaging, your family and your friends, these are the demographics of people that I want us to look out for. Another demographic of folks that I love very, very dearly because they are part of my community, communities of color. Less than thirty percent of communities of color came out in two thousand eighteen. We've gotta do better than that. But keep in mind, you know, I don't want us to say, "What's wrong with those eighteen to thirty-four year olds? What's wrong with those communities of color? What's wrong with those independents? Something's wrong with them." People don't just organically show up to vote. They show up because they saw an ad, because they got a phone call, because they got a text message, or somebody knocked at their door. You all are the foot soldiers in this fight to knock on their door, to send them a text message, to give them a phone call, so that we can make these numbers a whole lot better. When we talk about winning Tama County, I want y'all to do better than what you did in two thousand eighteen. And if you can do better than what you did in two thousand eighteen, we are in good shape because we've got some excellent folks who are running for office. Not just me, not just Eric. We've got Sarah Smith. Come on up, stand up. Come on up here, Sarah Smith. Come on up here. And then you've got Tim Cox. Stand right there, Sam. Come on up. Come on up, Sam. I'm putting them on the spot, y'all, but you know, candidates are used to this. But we've got incredible people who are running for office across this state, leaders who are insistent on putting you all first. If there is anything that you are going to get from the Iowa Democratic Party and our incredible ticket, it's the fact that we are insistent on putting you all first, because we've seen that the opposite way adds no value to any of us. And you notice, we're not talking bad about the other side, because we still need the other side to move forward. But what we're insisting upon is that we are going to include your vision into what we're gonna do in this state. I wanna give Sarah and Sam a couple of minutes to just greet you, and then we're gonna move on with the program. Right hand. Your right hand.
Well, great to see everyone tonight. I am absolutely thrilled to be down ballot from both of you. Amazing, amazing. You have a message that brings virtue to all of the over thousand doors that Sam and I have knocked on in both Tama and Proustie Counties. We continue to hear the need for funding for public education and continue to fight for women's healthcare rights. Those are the two things that we hear over and over again, and Sam and I are a positive candidate. So same, same message that Deidre said, we now need your help. We need your help to tell so many people that you have heard from us, you've been to our events, you've seen us. We're people who care. We are people who are listening. We are the candidates that wanna be here and wanna represent you at the State House. So please vote for us. I'm gonna pass it over to Sam now. Thank you.
I'm definitely the new kid on the block. This is the first time I've run for office. I wanna say every time that I listen to these guys speak, it's inspirational for me. We're so very fortunate to have some really great women candidates out right now. It's just unreal. And I feel so very fortunate to be able to learn from them every time that I'm here. Sarah and I are just small-town girls from Burnell, Iowa. We've been raised there, educated there. We have our families there. We believe in small town. This is what makes Iowa great. So we just are so fortunate to get to spend time with everybody here, to get to knock on your doors, to get to meet new people, and it's a huge learning curve for all of us. But again, this is something that we can do. We've gotta start small. We've gotta do the building blocks. We've gotta work our way up. But times are changing, and we can do this. We've gotta do it together.
Alright, so in closing, I'm gonna say this to you all. I live in Polk County. And you know, sometimes people aren't, you know, so sure about city folk running for rural folk. But just to give you a little bit of a snippet, I was originally born in Mississippi. My great-grandmother was a sharecropper. I went to high school and middle school in Tulsa, Oklahoma, where my husband is from. They have a cattle ranch out there. And I came to Iowa when I wanted to go to Drake University seeking an education. And I've been in Polk County ever since. In Polk County, we get to brag about how we can live, work, and play in our communities. The fact that I can buy a home in my community. I can come home and I can go to a small business and play around in my community, go to a bar.
I can come home and I can go to a small business and play around in my community, go to a bar, I can wake up and go to work in my community. Well, that mindset should be available in all ninety-nine counties across this state, for all demographics of people across this state. If you're going to get anything out of us in this ticket, it is the fact that we see very clearly, you no longer have to fight to be seen. You no longer have to fight to get something so basic as EMS services to your community. The fight is done, because we're gonna put up the fight for you, okay? Thank you all so much for being here. Oh, it looks like we're, are we taking questions? Who's running this program? Okay, it looks like we got time for questions. Oh, we got a question in the bank, you gotta come on up here, run on up here, run! I'm gonna get you to take the mic. Oh, you're coming up, he's coming up, come on up. What am I gonna do about the findings? Tell me your name first and how old you are. Clint Brown Nine, and Clint wants to know, what am I going to do about? We find ourselves in feeding this world and fueling this country. There is no reason why we should not be leading in environmental sustainability. We are going to make sure we get our water clean. There was already a constitutional amendment that was passed, and Iowa is yet to be funded. And so, we're gonna make sure that we can fund Iowa to clean our water. And that's going to be a collective approach, everybody has dues to pay as it relates to our duty to clean our water, whether we're urban, rural, or suburban Iowa. We're also gonna create pathways for not only our larger farmers to be successful, but our smaller farmers, who are just operating on two to five acres, and believe it or not, we've got farmers in this state that are just operating on two to five acres. So, we're gonna make pathways for them to be successful, very, very accessible to them. But the other component is that we've got a great deal of sustainability practices that we already know work. Iowa farmers have been using these practices for decades and decades. We have to make sure that there is funding available for them to use these practices. I'm gonna ask a farmer to give up four of his rows in row crop, then I've gotta make it work this way. Because he's providing for his family, and he's providing jobs in his community. So, the fact of the matter is, the way we resolve our climate issue is we do it together. Because right now, we've got farmers in one corner, we've got landowners in another corner, we've got city folks in this corner, we've got educators in this corner. We don't have a table that's bringing us all together. Because everybody wants to see environmental sustainability happen in this state in more ways than one. So, we might as well just sit at the table and figure out how we're gonna do it, okay? Good question. Yes, I hear you, Mr. Cyclone.
I kind of shut up, my family moved to Tama County in the eighteen sixties. And this subject comes up, I was in the State Government Committee in nineteen seventy-six. When you use the term public education, are you, talk about Spocky Settlements School right here in Tama County, and other schools like Iowa Department and School, what obligation has come into you there to those children? And those people may be slightly different version of what their education is.
That's a very good question, and the answer to that question is yes. The answer to that question is yes, and it's not just K through twelve, I wanna go beyond that. It's K through twelve, but it's also post-secondary education. We have to make sure that all of our schools are set up for success in this state to thrive, and we have the avenue to be able to do that. Do you wanna say something? Oh, I thought you were looking back.
Hi, Deidre, my name is Ron. My wife Sarah and I are from Marshalltown. And we wanted to ask you if you were aware of the religiously called LEK?
Say that again.
LEK.
I can't hear you.
LEK?
LEK.
Yes, are you aware of that bill?
No, I'm not. It's called L-E-A-B-K.
Yes, it's Language Acquisition for Deaf Children. It's a bill about protecting deaf children from language deprivation. It's recently passed in our state, and we are concerned about it being implemented properly. As well as the School for the Deaf in Council Bluffs has seen a significant decrease in enrollment rate. Once it became passed, it needs to be funded, as well as the school programs that they offer for the success of future generations of deaf people in Iowa. And like you said about Iowa being number one in education, we wanna make sure that that includes deaf students, so that we can grow and thrive. Like me, I went to the school back in the day, my parents valued education for me, and that school was able to offer me that education. It's difficult because it's in Council Bluffs, and it is a residential school, so some parents don't want to send their children there. But we don't wanna see it closed because it is so instrumental in the appropriate and excellent education of deaf children. So, I look forward to voting for you, and I hope that you will support the deaf school in Council Bluffs as well as LEK.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I actually had the fortunate opportunity to talk to Sarah a little bit more about this. One, increasing funding for access to the school in Council Bluffs. But also making sure that there's access, especially where we see high density populations of deaf children in our education system. Making sure that the services are available to them as well. And I learned this early on, ironically, as a basketball coach. I had two deaf players on my JV team and one on my varsity team. And I got an opportunity to learn how to coach through an interpreter, and that interpreter was at every single one of our games and at every single one of my practices. And I'll be honest with you, without having access to those services right there in my gym, it would've made it very, very difficult for me to coach those young girls. But because the access was there, they got an opportunity to experience a sport that they loved, and it became a part of them and their character development. And so, we definitely have to make sure that we're increasing access for our communities with disabilities all across the state as it relates to education, but more specifically with this specific niche area, there needs to be more funding. And I've, again, talked to Sarah quite a few times about this. For not only transportation to Council Bluffs, because some families can't afford to move over there. And for their children to go to the school. And so, you've gotta think holistically about how all children, deaf children throughout this state can benefit from the services, so that they're not losing their language, that's not what we want them to do. Thank you. Good question.
Well, we should have seen the dishes, and my name is Simply Snow. And I want to know what you're going to be able to do for our community as more-
Speak a little bit louder.
Making us more visible to everybody in the state. Because I realize that we're almost right back in the middle of the state, and almost nobody knows that we exist.
Yeah, that's a good question. How do we make your community more visible? So, one of the things I really, really appreciate, and I started it in this campaign experience, was lifting up the good that existed throughout our communities. And we don't get an opportunity to see all of the good that happens, but leadership has a platform to be able to do so. You know, even helping people understand what the Spocky Settlement is, the history that exists there. You know, when I came to the powwow this year, it was beautiful, but where was the state's presence in those moments? I go to like the Asian Heritage Festival, like, you know, there's so many amazing cultural things that exist throughout our community that most people don't even know about. But showing up is the biggest part of what we can do to make sure that we're not only present, but other people are engaged as well. But I'll tell you the other thing, when I said earlier, you no longer have to fight to be seen. You're gonna be visible to me as your next governor. I'm gonna make sure that your communities are getting the services that you need right here in your communities, making it very, very convenient for you, so that you don't have to travel so far out of the community, right? And so, these are ways that we can lift you all up, but also celebrate the diversity that exists in our state. We just don't do enough of that. We don't do enough of that, and I know this from experience. I used to work in sponsorships at a bank, and so, we sponsored all sorts of things that existed throughout the state. And I had the opportunity to go to these cultural events all across the state, and most Iowans don't even know about it. So, we've gotta lift them up. That's a really good question, thank you.
Deidre, can we also congratulate our Takeras ACT this morning?
Oh, congratulations! How do you feel? Are you tired? You're tired, alright, you're getting a needed tonight to rest, okay? Let me stay up all night. What do you wanna study? Do you know yet? Gender and women's study.
Hello, we got a big roll. I was wondering why, me and my wife go to State Fair, we went to Iowa State Fair. There used to be an Indian village there for a long time. My grandfolks were there, some of these old people that's gone, had a place there, trade post. We wouldn't see the odd old record at the Iowa State Fair, they got it in that one building. They showed everyone, every group down there, down there. I didn't see one thing about the fucking Indian there. Not even one, I asked first and I didn't hear anything, why? The Indian, they all were full of scrap. You know, I don't have person, I want this next year.
Yes, sir. The guy that raised the yard, all of it.
When you win, I want to do something about it.
Are you gonna help me?
I'm gonna help you.
Okay, alright. I don't know everything about the Spocky Settlement, I don't know everything. I don't know if you all had the opportunity, there's a, in the Memorial Union at University of Iowa, there's a whole room that talks about Spocky tribe history, it's actually pretty cool.
Yeah, but you know, I was a fellow, I didn't see the Spocky for the student, Indian village. They didn't show nothing about it, they didn't.
In the fair, at the fair.
I was there for, you know, every year, my folks were there, everybody down there, it all passed. So, that's why I said me, you know, and I didn't see nothing. They got the odd records there, everything was passed, you know, but nothing about the Indians.
That's important history.
Yes, and that's important to me.
Yes, sir. It should be important to all of us.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Deidre, can you help with making tuition free for the Native Americans that live in the state of Iowa at the Bay of the Universities? A lot of states are implementing this.
That's a big ass, free is a big ass. And I don't know if I can make it free, I'll just be honest and say that. But I know that I can create a stronger pathway. Because the cost of education is going up in the state. It used to be that the state funded our public institutions and community colleges, three-fourths of their budget. Now, we're seeing a fourth funding. But we know the cost is still going up, and unfortunately, the cost is being passed on to our students and their families. And so, I wanna make sure that we're making college more affordable, making state scholarships more accessible. And at the end of the day, ensuring that our young people are prepared to go to post-secondary all the way to when they're three years old. Because we see more and more our third grade reading scores are decreasing, especially amongst communities of color, cut and half. And we've gotta do a stronger job of making sure that those third grade reading scores are proficient. Because when they're not proficient, that tells us how many prison cells we have to build. When they are proficient, that tells us how many jobs we're going to fill. So, I'm gonna make sure that Spocky kids and black kids and brown kids all across this state have access to a strong education system that's actually meeting their needs and they can perform. So that when it's time to be prepared for post-secondary, they're prepared for post-secondary. But here's the other part of it, we've gotta fill eighty-one thousand jobs in the state today. And now, all of those jobs require a two-year or four-year degree. There are some jobs to get students to graduate eighteen, nineteen years old and get paid fifty-five, sixty-five thousand dollars a year. But they don't have the training in the high school experience to get them those jobs. We know that many of our communities need folks to, once they graduate from high school, they need to get a job, right? And so, I wanna make sure that our communities are positioned in such a way that we're preparing those students for those jobs. That means we're getting the trades back into the nine through twelve experience. That those trades include, you know, the typical trades of building, carpentry, and plumbing. But we're also gonna get some of our health sciences back into the schools, like phlebotomy, we're gonna get early childhood education. All of these jobs that we need to fill in this state, we're gonna make sure that our nine through twelve students have an opportunity to compete to get those jobs as well. Makes sense? I wish I could promise free, but at this point, we can't, we've got a lot of work to do. Our current governor's been starving too many of our systems that we've got a level set for several levels. But the pathway will be there, the pathway will be there.
I'd like to ask a question. You kind of mentioned this, like preschool and childcare. My daughter works at a preschool academy, and she has had roommates being afforded that. There's no way, and that's standard for all of us, if you're working preschooler type, you know, caring for younger children, which is needed for working for, in Iowa. What's the answer to that?
Well, the answer is that we've gotta increase reimbursement rates in the state. The business model really does not work the way that it should work. On average, childcare workers are paid twenty-six thousand dollars a year. And we're treating them like glorified babysitters, and they're not. They're educating our students in their most vulnerable phase, where their spongy is absorbing everything. And we've gotta make sure that we're paying them what they deserve. But the only way we can do that is increase our reimbursement rates for, well, that's not the only way. But a solid way to do that is to increase our reimbursement rates for the providers. But the other way is that we can get more people into this field as well, post-secondary, and get them engaged. But we've gotta do a stronger job there, and that's where state funding comes in. Because it's obvious and apparent that private industry is not gonna come in and say today, we've lost nearly forty percent of our childcare providers in this state over the last two and a half years. And as a result, it's harder and harder for people to get to work. Again, we've gotta fill more than eighty thousand jobs, and we're short childcare workers in this state. And we're wondering, why aren't people getting back to work? Well, there's a reason for it. So, we're gonna do better there, because we need our childcare providers, I see them as educators, I really, really do. Ver, do you have a question?
Yes, for the veterans in the house, what is your opinion about making benefits a little more accessible?
For veterans?
Yes, because the VA lines have been long, just making some of them accessible.
You know, one thing that I wanna be an advocate for related to veterans is making sure that our congressional and our federal representation from the Senate is very, very clear about where Iowa should be related to veteran services. Because they have a great deal of control over, helping us overcome some of the challenges that our veterans are facing related to access to services. One thing that we can do is look at how we are taxing veteran benefits as well in the state. And look comparatively at what some other states are doing, and see if we can alleviate some challenges for folks that way. But I'll tell you, I realize that, you know, VA benefits get you into VA hospitals and VA clinics and things along those lines. But I honestly want all of our healthcare outlets in this state to be accessible for veterans. I mean, that's what I can work on in this state, making sure that you have a pathway to get your services, whether you're going to a VA hospital or you're going to an urgent care. That means more to me than making sure that you just have one or two options. I want you to have as many options as you need to get access to the care you need, because all of our veterans aren't just living around veterans hospitals and veterans clinics. And if you all have to travel eighty miles to get the care that you need, and that's your only option, we've gotta figure out what some other options are, and the other options are making sure that all of the providers are equipped to handle veterans. Does that make sense? Is all we have for questions, who's gonna close us out? Cameron, come on up here. Again, thank you all so much for being here, great questions. We've got like fifteen more days left, and my big question is, are you willing?
Yeah!
I don't believe you. Are you willing?
Hey, give it up for Deidre one more time. Give it up for Eric Van Lake one more time. And I wanna do something real special, because this is, isn't this beautiful? Ver, man, I was not expecting this walking in. I wanna get a picture with the entire, with the entire group, so Deidre, Eric, if I can get you guys right up here in the middle. Ver, Sam, Sarah, can I get you guys up here? And then, if everybody can fill around.